Give me a minute. All I can talk, you can leave that. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. If there's any private party recording this hearing, please step up to the podium and request permission. I'll introduce the board and staff. On my far right is Mark Fineran, who's always on time now. And to his left is Scott Peterson. And to my right is Frank Duffy, the clerk. My name is Suzanne Murphy. I'm chair. To my left is Tony Petucci, a voting member. And our staff is Ashley DeMello. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws and reviewing and voting on every application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin, chairing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board, though. Three, the board will then question the applicant. Four, the public will then be invited to comment. Comments should be limited to two minutes and strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Speak into the mic. It will not amplify your voice, but it will record audio for FCTV viewers. And then we have a public comment time right now if anyone would like to speak, but nothing that's on our agenda and we don't comment on it. Anybody for public comment? All right, let's get started, then. Okay, we have no continuations. Our first hearing is 05125 One Worcester Court.
Okay, application 051.
Hold on, Frank, for one second.
Madam Chair, I'm a direct abuter to this property, so I am going to step down. Well, before doing so, I'd like to take a page out of Kevin's book or paraphrase him and say that these are perhaps the nicest neighbors in all of Falmouth.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Tried to comb my hair, right, to cover it.
Okay, Frank, sorry to interrupt you.
No, fine. Appropriate. This is application 051 of the year 2025. Carol Ann McCarthy has submitted an application to the Falmouth zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240-10.2A of the zoning bylaw to raise the existing nonconforming detached garage and dwelling and rebuild a new single-family dwelling on the property. Property is located at One Worcester Court in Falmouth. So, the zoning district is RC. The flood zone is AE13. The existing property has a footprint of 1,658 square feet. It's four-bedroom. The proposed property or structure will have a footprint of 1,528 square feet and will also be a four-bedroom. We have no previous zoning board of appeals decision on file, at least that I found. The lot is 3,788 square feet in a zoning district which currently requires 40,000 square feet, so it's a nonconforming lot. Frontage is 50 feet, 50.57 feet in the zoning district which currently requires 100 feet of frontage, so it's a nonconforming frontage. The public right-of-way, Worcester Court, is public right there. Existing lot coverage by structure, 43.6%. It will be reduced to 40.3%. The limit is 20, but they're already over it. Lot coverage by structure, parking and paving, currently 53.6%. Be reduced to 49.8. The limit is 40, but they're already over that, so there's nonconformities there. The setbacks on the east is 3.1 feet, on the west is 12.7 feet. Now, that is the street frontage, so that's nonconforming, as is the others. North, 3.4; south, 12.7. Now, on the files that were presented, I could not find the height of the existing structure, so maybe they'll tell us during the comments. But the proposed structure will have a height of 34.5 feet. The limit is 35 feet. We have referrals from various town departments. Engineering has noted that we should pay attention to stormwater runoff. There should be three parking spaces on the property. And they've asked that we condition the project for erosion and sediment control during construction. The board of health has noted that the property is on the sewer. Conservation commission has advised us that they have approved the project via a negative request for determination of applicability. The water department actually requires that the water service be upgraded to 1-inch PE and the meter be in the house. The building commissioner has confirmed, wants confirmation of the dimensions and lot coverage. Planning board, no comment. Fire department has submitted no comment. I found one letter in support in the file, none in opposition.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Jack Herndon. I'm an attorney with Senian Associates in Brewster. Here this evening on behalf of the owners of One Worcester Court, Carol Ann and John McCarthy, right over here, regarding their request for a special permit for a raise and rebuild. Now, as you mentioned, the subject property, One Worcester Court, is improved with a four-bedroom single-family dwelling and detached garage. They were built sometime around the 1930s. The property is in the residential C zoning district. It's nonconforming as to lot area and frontage. And the existing dwelling is nonconforming as to coverage by structure and setbacks. The proposed plan this evening is to raise the existing dwelling and detached garage and rebuild within a similar footprint. The provision of the zoning bylaw that applies to this application is section 240-10-2A, which states that this board may issue a special permit for a change, extension, or alteration to a pre-existing nonconforming structure upon a finding that the proposed structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Now, just jumping into the "not substantially more detrimental" criteria, it states that in determining whether the reconstruction is considered substantially more detrimental, you shall consider three main things: whether the extension or alteration extends or creates a new dimensional nonconformity, whether it impairs views or vistas, and whether it reasonably conforms to the average dimensions of the neighborhood. First, there are no new dimensional nonconformities. As Mr. Duffy mentioned, there are existing nonconformities here, but we are not making any of them more nonconforming. The lot coverage is decreasing from 43.6 to 40.3 while improving the setbacks. From the side yard facing Mr. Fineran's property, it's going from 3.1 all the way to 10.6. So, there was an, there is an existing garage that is right up against the property line. Because we're getting rid of the garage, we're now adding a substantial amount of space in between those two properties. Front yard is going from 12.7 to 12.8, rear yard from 3.4 to 3.7. And as was mentioned, no additional bedrooms are being proposed. So, there isn't really an impact on the sewer here. While ridge height does increase, I just want to note the existing ridge height is 24 feet. It is being raised to 34 feet 5 inches. We are seven inches below the conforming maximum requirement for the area. The main reason for adding about 10 feet here is because the building code in Massachusetts has changed and because Falmouth Heights is in a flood zone, the area needs to be raised up. So, that's really the only reason for adding the height. It's to comply with the new building code. Next, the proposed raise and rebuild does not impair views or vistas. Even with the increase in ridge height, the increase is in keeping with the neighborhood. This is the heights. This is, you know, tall houses on small lots. It's going up in 10 feet, but it's not blocking anyone's roof deck or deck, you know, along Worcester Court specifically. That would be blocking their view of the beach or the green space across Worcester Court. It's not obstructing any abutters in any way on the sides by proposing any, you know, part of the house that's sticking out. So, therefore, nothing that we're proposing will substantially block the views or vistas. Now, finally, the proposed raise and rebuild reasonably conforms with the average dimensions found in the neighborhood. If you see on the coverage worksheet that was submitted, the proposed dwelling conforms with the average coverage in the neighborhood. We took data from neighboring homes on Montgomery Court, Grand Ave and Worcester Court and found that they are all either similar or larger than One Worcester Court, with the exception being, let's see, Four Worcester Court and 95 Grand Ave. But these are lots with substantially more square footage. The average lot size in that area is around, you know, just under 4,000 square feet. Those two lots are well over 7,000 square feet. So, because all the houses are kind of similar, the coverage is going to be a little bit smaller on those lots. So, for those reasons, we ask this board to approve the proposed raise and rebuild under section 240-10-2A and find that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformities. With that, I'll turn it over to you for questions. Thank you.
Scott, you're on, you're at, you're on base, actually.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the information. More confirmatory, because looking at the application, page eight and nine, and then again on 18, so could you just confirm one more time what is the existing structure's percentile in the existing structure's parking and paving? Just, we had some different numbers there.
So, I submitted a new existing conditions plan, which should say 43.6 for the building coverage. I don't have the plan in front of me, but it should, can you read 50? Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, great. Again, confirmatory, the ridge height? I'm looking at 34 feet 5 inches.
Correct. That is the proposed, the existing, according to statement from our architect, is 24 feet for existing.
So, we'll probably want to have an as-built on the height? No, very, very nice step up from what you have right now. It's a tough lot in a tough neighborhood over there. Got to have a safe place for that Cadillac that we walked by.
We all look at that.
But, no, very, very nice. And thank you for your input.
Thank you.
I love the Cadillac, too. That's really nice. I bicycle by there regularly and I always look at it. I think in my opening, when I read the relevant facts, I said that the proposed height would be 34.5 feet. It's really 34 feet 5 inches. Is that, there's a little difference.
Correct, yep.
But I want to, we did get this revised existing condition plan, and it's got some information on it that was not on the plan that I saw. But anyways, I want to confirm. The setback to Worcester Court is shown on this new plan. It's 4.2. Is that the correct number?
Is that the existing or the?
The existing, 4.2?
Yes.
Okay, now, so, that's the west dimension. So, what is going to be the proposed setback?
I believe it's 4.7.
So, it's an improvement a little bit?
Yes. It's a tight lot.
All right. The other dimensions I don't have any difficulty with, and I think I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
We just got that plan that shows the parking on it, and that was the only question I had. So, I'm all set. Tony?
Most of the questions have been asked and answered. I appreciate that. I just want to clarify something on the proposed height plan. Based on something from engineering, it says, "Please revise the plans and demonstrate that the 39 by 18-foot parking spaces would be located entirely within the lot, including dimension labels." This plan dated revised 9/3/25. Does it, it shows 38.2 by 18 gravel parking. Am I?
I don't think that's correct. I think it should be 9 by 18.
So, you'll just comply with the engineer's?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. My only question. Fits in very nicely.
Any further questions?
No, I have none.
Would anybody from the public like to comment on this?
Jay, mine.
All right. What do you think, Scott?
Motion to close?
A second. We have a motion to close in a second. Do you have anything further?
No.
You all set? Everybody's all set up here? Good? All those in favor of closing, say aye. Opposed, none.
Motion to approve with conditions?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Let's go, Frank.
Okay, I've read most of the relevant information, but I'll go over some of it again. We have a lot that's 3,088 square feet in a zoning district that requires 40,000 square feet, so that's a nonconformity. The frontage is approximately one-half of the required current frontage. It's 50.75 feet in a zoning district which requires 100 feet. Worcester Court is a public right-of-way at this particular location. Reviewing again, lot coverage by structure will be 40.3%, which is a decrease. The limit is 20, but it's already been exceeded, so that doesn't really apply. The lot coverage by structure, parking and paving, will be 49.8%, and that's a decrease from the existing. The limit is 40. That's already been exceeded, so we're over it anyways. The average lot coverage by structure in the neighborhood, as revealed on the worksheet submitted by the applicant, is 40.68%, which is very similar to what the 40.3% in the proposed structure. The setbacks, the setback of the street, Worcester Court, is 4.2 feet. The proposal is to increase the setback to 4.7 feet, thus lessening that nonconformity. The other nonconforming dimensions will also be improved. The existing height is 24 feet. The proposal is for a height of 34 feet 5 inches. I have read the referrals from the various departments. I note that there's one letter in support and one person voiced favor of the project at the hearing. Under section 240-10.2A, we're authorized to grant a special permit provided that the new structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. We note that there will be no new nonconformities created by this project. In fact, the existing nonconformities will be improved. There's no negative impact on existing views and vistas. And the project conforms to the average lot coverage in the neighborhood, which is 40.68%, and it is, the proposal is for 40.3%. As far as for a special permit under section 240-12.1E, we find that the site is adequate, the property is adequate for the proposed use. It is suitable for the proposed use. There's no negative impact on traffic flow and safety. There'll be no negative impact on neighborhood visual character, views and vistas. There's adequate sewage disposal, as evidenced by the fact that it is serviced by the Falmouth Town Sewer. There are adequate utilities, and there'll be no negative impact on the supply of affordable housing.
And now, we do conditions. The certification.
The as-built on the ridge.
Yeah. As-built on the height?
Per plans.
Per plans? Per all boards?
Yes.
Departments and departments.
And referrals.
All referrals, right. Applicant said no bedrooms will be added?
No, 4-4.
I don't know if they need a police detail. I don't know. Hopefully.
Yeah, they might, because it's right up on the street. It's going to be a very difficult site for construction.
Yeah. You'll probably have to contact the police.
Okay.
To, you know, do the construction.
Just during the big stuff.
All construction materials and vehicles be kept on-site.
No further instructions?
Or in the neighborhood driveway.
Or in the neighborhood driveway.
Nor anything else that you can think of?
So, I just had a note about the den and the office maintaining that case opening.
Oh, okay.
Good point.
Should we hear it?
No, I did not.
You want to repeat?
Just for the den and the office to maintain the case opening so that it doesn't show as a bedroom for a other fellow.
The plan will be corrected per the request of the town engineer?
Mm-hmm.
On the parking spaces?
Yes.
And he did the, he did the coverage change, too?
Yes.
I think that's it, right? Anything else you can think of, anybody? All right. Okay, you guys ready to vote?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
All right, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next at bat, we have 637 North Falmouth Highway.
This is application 051.
Madam Chair, as far as this one is, there were no stakes there. I couldn't even find the lot. I assumed it's the pull-over and the, off of 28A or North Falmouth Highway, but I...
But this is a by-right construction. Doesn't need stakes. We're only approving a third bay.
Oh, yeah, that would be correct.
It's just attached to the house, so.
It's in the house.
So, you owe me for gas.
Me, too. All right, so this is application number 053 of the year 2025. Nicholas W. Peters trustee has applied to the Falmouth zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240-6.6B of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to allow a third garage bay at the subject property, which is identified as 637 North Falmouth Highway in North Falmouth. The property is located in an RB zoning district. There's no overlay districts noted. Flood zone not noted. However, there is a note in the file that the property is in the DEP nitrogen-sensitive area. There are no previous zoning board of appeals decisions applicable to this property on file. The lot is 23,738 square feet in a zoning district which currently requires a minimum of 40,000 square feet. Street frontage is 252.7 feet in a zoning district which currently requires a minimum of 100 square, 100 feet. North Falmouth Highway at this location is a state highway, so it's a public right-of-way. There's no current structure on the property, but the proposed structure is 8.8% lot coverage by structure. The limit is 20. Again, lot coverage by parking, paving and structure. There's nothing to report, but the proposal is for 18.9%. The limit is 40. There are no setbacks to report as the lot is vacant. The proposed structure will be 34 feet 5 inches. Nothing there to report. The engineering department has asked us to consider stormwater runoff and to apply the erosion and sediment control standards for during construction. Board of health says there are no issues now because they have to go when they apply for a building permit, but they may face a potential for a D-NIGHT system depending upon what regulations apply at the time of construction. Conservation commission has no comment. The water department notes this is a new service, so they'll have to comply with all current regulations. The building department has no comment. There are no letters in opposition, no letters in support.
That's it. Take it away.
So, we're looking to build a new house. The board of health has approved our septic design, so I do have an approved septic from them, so there shouldn't be any issues with that. We applied and got it approved prior to the ruling saying that you had to do de-nitrification, but it does show a spot where a tank could be if we make any changes other than what we're going for now.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Yeah, we do have an approved septic plan. And I apologize, the engineers were supposed to stake out the house anyways a few weeks ago, but they, I guess they never got there.
You don't need it. It's a by-right construction. They just had to approve the third garage bay on-site.
Yeah, so, in the original plans, it did have a third garage, but we changed it, and it should show on the new plans that it's actually living space. It's just going to have a garage door that's going to be all glass. So, in the office that we have now, where it's going to be like a game room and an office, it's going to have a door that you can open up all the way out to like a patio where the driveway and stuff is.
Cool.
So, it's not going to be used, I guess, as a garage, but it's going to be used as an office and just like a theater game room.
I had my money on a boat, to be honest.
Very tall garage door.
Yeah.
What's the height of the garage door?
I will probably put a 12-foot door. I just, to get a 12-foot opening glass door, it costs 20 times the amount of a glass garage door, so that's why we're going to go with a garage door.
Only 20?
Yeah.
Things aren't so bad.
Mark, do you have any questions down there?
No, it's cool. I mean, technically, it is a garage, even though they're not using it as a garage, but it's all good with me. Nice place. Good for you.
Thanks.
I know you're here for the garage, which is fine in my estimation also, but just one point. The plan seemed to show three bedrooms, but the septic design is for five bedrooms. Am I missing something? And again, I'm fine with the garage, so you, it's just...
So, that's just, I do excavation. I'm a contractor, so that's, it's less expensive to build the system as big as it's allowed than it is to go back and do it later. So, if we ever plan to do an addition or something like that, we would, you know, we would already have the capacity. We wouldn't have to dig up the whole yard again and redo the system or add to it, so...
I guess you're prepared to do that IA system pretty soon, too, right?
I will if I have to. They're expensive.
Yep. No, just again, that's, board of health might be developing that regulation fairly soon, so that's fine.
Yeah.
It's all set up for as accessory structure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm okay, Frank.
I'm all set.
I'm all set, too, Tony.
Just a quick question. Beyond the garage door, because we don't have plans that indicate the size and the setback and all that, the building commissioner is going to review the plans before he gives out a building permit. And so, you're aware, because we can't see anything in the plans, how much more you're going to be encroaching on the sideline setback where you're now set at 28 feet, if I'm correct. You realize that that's going to be, it may, I don't think it'll be an issue if it's only a 12-foot or addition to the garage.
You mean if we do an addition in the future?
So, no, if you put a garage door on, right now, you're, you've got a 28-foot setback. All I'm bringing it up is that you're a contractor. You know that you're going to have to manage the sideline setback, so...
Oh, yeah.
And then, the last question I have, and again, this is going to come up with the building commissioner. Are you aware of this lot existed prior to or on it before 4-1-93? So that it's...
Like, you mean it's nonconforming? Yeah.
Right, yeah. So, this lot existed prior to 4-1-93?
Yes.
And you can be able to prove that to the building commissioner?
Yes.
Yeah, we, and I, before we purchased it, we, that was already like determined and figured
out, and I believe that's how we got the septic approved prior to it.
Thank you very much.
Any follow-up up here? Anybody from the public want to comment on this project? Shy group.
I'm sorry, do you get your name for the question?
Nicholas Peters.
Oh, thank you.
Motion to close?
Second.
We have a motion to close in a second. Anything else you want to give us for information? Everybody's all set?
Yeah.
All those in favor of closing?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
Motion to approve with conditions?
I'll second. We have a motion to approve with conditions. Frank?
Okay, we have an application before us under section 240-6.6B of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to add a third garage bay. We're not approving the house that it's going to be in, but just the third garage bay. It's an RB zoning district. The lot is 23,738 square feet in a zoning district currently requiring a minimum of 40,000 square feet. Frontage is 252.7 feet in a zoning district currently requiring 100 feet. North Falmouth Highway at this location is a state highway. The lot coverage by structure of the proposed structure will be 8.8%. The zoning limit is 20, so it's conform. Lot coverage by structure, parking and paving of the proposed structure and parking and paving will be 18.9%. The limit is 40, so it conforms. The setbacks will all conform to zoning as determined by the building commissioner at the time. We do not actually have a, have that detail, but we do know that the height of the structure is proposed to be 34 feet, five inches, so it's very close to the 35 feet of the zoning bylaw. We have no letters in support, no letters in opposition, nobody testified at the public hearing. Mr. Peters informed us at the hearing that he has an approval for the septic system. He also informed us that although there will be a third garage bay and a garage door, the present intention is not to use it as a garage, but to use it as a portion of the living space of the house. There'll be a 12-foot garage door. Under section 246.6B of the Falmouth zoning bylaw, a special permit is needed for any structure on a lot less than 30,000 square feet. This particular lot is 23,738 square feet, so the special permit is necessary, and we make the finding that the proposed third bay garage will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Just won't be any special detriment to the neighborhood. As far as a special permit under section 240, 12.1E, we make the finding that the lot is adequate for the proposed use. It is suitable for the proposed use. There's no demonstrated impact or negative impact on traffic flow and safety, no demonstrated impact or negative impact on neighborhood visual, visual character, views or vistas. The sewage disposal will be handled by permit from the Board of Health, there's adequate utilities, and there's no demonstrated negative impact on affordable housing.
Thank you. All right, conditions. Per plans, all boards? Construction hours, seven to seven, Monday through Friday, eight through four on Saturday. No holidays. No construction on Sundays. Construction vehicles, materials will, will be located on the lot? Not in the street. Dark sky, compliant lighting?
Police.
I did, oh, yeah, police. You may need police if you...
For street work.
Fine, you need to, yeah. The other thing I did read in the file, it says he must go through MassDOT. Did you read that?
Well, that's because it's a state highway.
For the, for the...
For the driveway.
Does that have to be a condition, do you think?
He's not gonna get his permit unless he goes there, so...
So we don't, we can just leave it out, I guess. Anybody have any other conditions? Nope?
I had the height listed as 28 feet, six inches, and I think maybe somebody said 34?
Yes, that's what I got. Was it, was I wrong?
I'll double check.
I, I think it is 28. I don't think it's, it's not 34.
All right, well, then I apologize if it's wrong.
I don't, I had 35.
I would try and make it 34, but it's a little big.
The way we get them, they're very tiny, and it's gonna strain your eyes to read them.
Maybe we check on that. I think, I thought I read 28 too, so...
I can't see.
But it doesn't matter, it's a house, so it's...
But I didn't know if we need a, a...
We can't give them a...
Certification for, for the...
The building commissioner is gonna give him a permit for the house, so we don't really care.
Any other conditions? Everybody's all set? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. You're all set?
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, next at bat is 27 Dartmouth Ave.
Hello, how we doing tonight?
Good. Okay, this is, um, application zero fifty-five of the year 2025. John and Barbara O'Connell have applied to the Falmouth zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240, 10.2A of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at 27 Dartmouth Avenue in Falmouth, Massachusetts. The property is in an RC zoning district. No noted overlay districts, but it, the lot is bisected by the line separating the AE-13 and the AE-14 zoning district, uh, excuse me, flood, flood zone. There's no previous zoning board of appeals decision on file for the property. The lot is very small, it's 2,156 square feet in a zoning district currently requiring 40,000 square feet. Street frontage is 48.15 feet in a zoning district currently requiring 100 feet. The existing single-family dwelling has a footprint of 878 square feet and it's three bedrooms. The proposed dwelling will be a single-family dwelling having a footprint of 866 square feet, and it will be four bedrooms. The lot coverage by structure, the existing, is 40.72%. Will be decreased slightly to 40.16%. The limit is 20, so they're already over it. That's a non-conformity. The average lot coverage by structure in the immediate neighborhood per the worksheet submitted is 41.27%. Lot coverage by structure, parking and paving, currently 55.75% will be decreased to 55.19%. The limit is 40%, and so it's already non-conforming. It's over the limit. The non-conformities, the street setback, which is the east, is 1.4 feet. 25 is required, 35 is required, actually. The west is 2.9, uh, or 29, excuse me, 29 north, 13.8, and south is 2.4. That's another non-conformity. I do not have in the file, I couldn't find any reference to the, to the existing height or the height of the existing structure, so we'll pick that up in the presentation. The engineering department has advised us that the property will require a driveway permit. They've advised us to pay attention to stormwater runoff and to condition the property on erosions for compliance with the town's erosion and settlement, settlement control regulations. The property is on the Falmouth sewer. Conservation has advised us there is incomplete permitting for this property. The, so that'll have to be completed before the project can go forward. The water department requires an upgrade of the water service to 1 HPE and the meter inside the new structure. Planning board has advised us the demolition delay bylaw applies and that the applicant will have to conform to it. The building department asks that we have confirmation, or make a condition for confirmation of the first floor elevation. As far as letters in support in the file, there are five letters in support, none in opposition noted.
You're at bat.
Uh, good evening, everyone. So, good intro there. So I'm here in representation of John and Barbara O'Connell.
Excuse, what was your name? Sorry.
Uh, Brian Bork. I apologize. So John's been vacationing here for more than 60 years. His family's actually owned that property since 1965, so he's spent a good part of his life down here. As we know, we're applying to the board for a special permit pursuant to section 240, 10.2A to raise the existing cottage and rebuild a new dwelling on the undersized lot. As was said, the subject property is 2,156 square feet. I'm glad we had another Falmouth Heights in here before. That was kinda nice. But, um, it's, it is on town sewer. It's located in what you guys must be seeing now, like the Limwea, the coastal A-zone, which is a new zone for the flood plain. So that's why the conservation had to clear up how to file it, and they decided it would be an RDA, so that's good. The cottage was built about 1915, and obviously the pre-existing non-conformities are setbacks and lot coverage. As you can see in the bulk calc worksheet, which, if I can figure out how to... There we go. So 18, 17 of the 18 lots, 94% are over the 20% lot coverage. I was hard-pressed to find a lot that wasn't over lot coverage. There's one in that neighborhood that's 60% lot coverage. The average is 41.27, and the O'Connell's proposed home would be less than that at 40.16.
Back to the plot plan.
If that's up there. So, on the, on the plan, the current coverage is, is, um, 878 square feet of structure, so it's 40.72%. The new dwelling will be 866, so that's 40.16 lot coverage. Although minimal, it is a reduction of 12 square feet, 0.56%. And based off the size of the lot, that was really tough to get, you know, any kind of decrease there, so we're happy with that. The biggest improvements will be the, the yard setback requirements, and I think that's gonna have a really substantial impact on the property and the neighborhood. Minor improvement on the right side, 2.5 from 2.4. The left side will remain conforming, going from 13.8 to 10.1. The rear improves significantly from 2.9 to 10.6, so we take a non-conformity and make it conforming. And, um, the most notable is the front, going from 1.4 feet setback to 7.8. So as we all know, the area with the narrow streets and busy summers, moving the house back from the road was, was an important goal to obtain in design. We believe the proposed home would be very much in line with the neighboring community, doesn't block any views or vistas. There was a, a lot of support in the neighborhood. Most people in that area have already raised and rebuilt or added on to their homes, so it fits in very well. Do not feel that it would be in any way more detrimental to the area. Rather, a really good improvement, if you look at everything else there. I'm sure you guys went to the site. And again, we've had a lot of support from the neighborhood. So, uh, as John and Barbara prepare for retirement and full-time residence in Falmouth, they're excited to turn that quaint cottage into their year-round home, so giving them the opportunity to appreciate all that Falmouth has to offer, relax, enjoy retirement. So John, Barbara, the family, hope the board will approve this appeal so they can enjoy the home for many, many more years to come.
Thanks. You wanna start off, Mark? Your neck of the woods?
Um, yeah, it's, I mean, it's fairly obvious this is maybe two or three weeks overdue, but I, I don't have anything except, Frank, the height of the existing is here, 20 feet, two.
I was gonna say, I thought it was on the plan.
It's on the first, with the pictures.
Right here?
Top left, picture.
And what's, what's the...
20 feet, two.
What's the proposed height?
Uh, proposed? 32, two feet and, yeah, 32, two inches and 1/8.
32 feet.
Two and 1/8 inches.
Well, the CAD system puts the dimension in, so that's why you get the 8.
Thanks.
All right.
Can you pull up the, yeah, could you leave the elevations up? That'd be nice.
I can, shh, let's see if they fit a little bit. So, the other thing we're gonna do is we're gonna incorporate everything to stay into that, 'cause again, lot coverage, even though it's a neighborhood, so they'll have parking underneath it. The stairs stay underneath the building, so they're not outside of the footprint of the building. Anything that's gonna happen is gonna stay within that footprint, so outside of that structure, the home, there'll be nothing but gravel parking.
Are you all set?
I'm good.
Are you gonna keep the sign Johnny Petunia? Is that's gonna stay in the...
I'm gonna change its name.
Can we condition that? Uh, no, uh, to Mark's point, it's, uh, it'd be a nice change. It's a, it's a tight lot, and you're doing a nice job on the upgrades. As you mentioned, the historical commission, I guess we confirm the first floor height. You need the driveway permit. No, everything's good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good luck.
What are you gonna do about the, um, delay, demo delay bylaw?
That's right. Good point.
Demo delay bylaw? I'll file with, uh, conservation. We're, we're not doing this till next fall, so we have a lot of time.
You're aware that you have to do something?
Yes, I am.
Okay, fine.
Yep, yep, yep. I've done it before. Yep.
So, then again, we got an incomplete referral from conservation, so you're gonna go be, did you have a hearing last night?
I did not. No, so, I did not. We have not been involved with conservation yet. Again, there's a little uncertainty with the limo and the coastal A being new, so currently it's not covered technically in Falmouth wetlands regulations, 'cause even though it's an A-zone, it gets treated like a V. So they sent us an email saying we're gonna do an RDA, but they're changing their bylaw. I think they're changing the wetland regulation to make it now an NOI, but we're gonna be under an RBA till they change that.
Okay, so that's down the road.
Yep.
Okay, fine. And I, I got the, the building height clarified here while we were just talking, so that was my other question, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Frank.
And you still have to go to historical?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I talked with Melinda and...
Good, yeah, okay. Yeah, I think that's all I had too. Tony?
Yes, a nice addition to the neighborhood. Uh, I always ask these questions when it comes to roof deck because I'm always concerned with neighborhood oversight, and I'm gonna bring it up today. And the opinion is, what is the distance setback from those, when the back railing is really what I'm concerned with. It does overlook backyard only, but I'm always concerned about what one might see from that roof deck.
So on the back of the lot, we improved that setback, and the neighboring house there is kinda setback off to the left, it's yard, so it's not looking into any house windows, that kind of concept. Did keep roof line on the sides where it's tighter for that privacy concept, and just the railings in the front, the street side and the rear side, because on the street side's great, and on the rear side, it's, it's someone's yard behind them, so it's not looking into...
Well, the street side, I don't, generally I don't have an issue with that, but I do generally have an issue with roof decks overlooking someone else's backyard. And, um, I know, nobody ever likes me to say that, but I do, because we have to consider our neighbors around us.
It's a double lot behind him.
Well, one of the things that I look at is how much, how directly does that roof deck bear on what is behind it in this particular case? From all appearances, it looks like you're not looking into someone's home. They have a garage evidently to the right that goes into that house at 207 Grand.
Correct.
All right. Then I, I'm going to, I'm going to leave that alone, because I think that the setback of that railing will prohibit much leaning over and looking into the backyard.
Thank you.
Anybody else up here? No, I gotta go to the public.
Oh, Christ.
Anybody from the public wanna comment on this? You're gonna be happy, huh?
Motion to close.
Not you. I was talking about the nice people that are building this dwelling.
Motion to close.
Sorry. The bride new. We have a motion to close. I'll second.
You second.
We have a motion to close in a second. Are you all set?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Everyone else up here is all set? All those in favor of closing?
Aye.
Opposed, none?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second that.
Hey, we have the property at 27 Dartmouth Avenue in Falmouth Heights. It's RC zoning district. The flood zone is split on the lot, AE-13, AE-14. There are no previous zoning board of appeals decision. The lot is 2,156 square feet in a zoning district currently requiring a minimum of 40,000 square feet. Frontage is 48.15 feet in a zoning district currently requiring 100 feet. The existing single-family dwelling is 878 square feet. It's a three-bedroom. The proposed single-family dwelling is 866 square feet. It's a four-bedroom. Dartmouth Avenue is a public right-of-way at this particular location. The proposed house will have a lot coverage by structure of 40.16%, which is above the 20% limit. It's, it's presently non-conforming. It will remain non-conforming, but it will be slightly improved. The average lot coverage by structure in the neighborhood is 41.27%, and the proposed structure will be slightly less than that at 40.16%. Lot coverage by structure, proposed structure will be 55.19%. The limit is 40, so it's non-conforming, will remain non-conforming, but it will be less than, than the existing lot coverage by structure. The setbacks are non-conforming. The street at Dartmouth Avenue is 1.4 feet. It will be increased to 7.8 feet. The other dimensions will also be increased, so there'll be no new non-conformities. The height of the proposed building is 32 point, 32 feet, two inches, so it's within the 35 feet of permitted by the zoning bylaw. I have read the referrals, and during testimony, Mr. Bork testified that they will be getting, dealing with the planning board and the history... dealing with the planning board and the historical commission for the demolition delay bylaw, and also with the conservation commission to address the issues in the, or address the incomplete referral we got from them. The building commissioner has also noted that they want confirmation of the first-floor elevations after construction. There were five letters in support. There is no testimony at the public hearing. Under two forty, ten point two A, we're authorized to grant a special permit to raise and rebuild the existing single, non-conforming single-family dwelling, provided it does not increase non-conformities. It does not, does not, does not negatively impact existing views and vistas. It does not. It can reasonably conforms to the average lot coverage by structure in the neighborhood at, which is forty point two-seven percent. Since this will be forty point one-six percent, it does reasonably conform under section two forty, twelve point one E, the criteria for a special permit. We find that the site is adequate for the proposed use. The site is suitable for the proposed use. There's no negative impact on traffic flow and safety. There's no negative impact on neighborhood visual, visual character, views and vistas. There's adequate sewage disposal, as evidenced by the fact that it's on the town sewer. There's adequate utilities and no negative impact on the supply of affordable housing.
Did you get the heights?
Yeah, thirty.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if I messed up. Okay, conditions. Historical?
Where do they get subject to CONCOM?
Huh?
Does that have to be subject to CONCOM?
Yeah. I'm just starting off with my list. He's got a bunch of them. Historically, he had a waiver from historical. He has to get elevation for FEMA from building department. He has to go to CONCOM for the demo permit and for CONCOM.
Planning board.
Planning board.
Takes care of the historical commission, and they grant the, they want a waiver of the demolition delay bylaw.
Oh, that's right. I wrote he has to get a waiver. Right, okay. Any other conditions? No, no further structures?
Driveway permit.
Asbils.
Driveway permit. Let's go through that. Per plans, all the boards, all departments. The police, the applicant will call police for traffic control. Construction hours, seven AM, seven PM, Monday through Friday, eight through four on sad days. No construction on Sunday or town holidays. Violation of work hours, report to the ZBA. Construction materials and construction vehicles all within the lot. Doc Sky compliant lighting.
We need a funnel and a shoehorn.
Did we get, uh, did we get asbils?
No, we did not. It's thirty-two in the height, right?
Well, I just want to clarify something on asbils.
Yeah, go for it.
When we have these small lots, when I suggest to the board, asbils, I'm not just talking about the height, but I'm talking about setbacks, because we're within.
Inches.
Forty-two inches in some place, yeah.
Yeah, so that's legit, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want them to give us an inch and then take it back.
I don't want anyone taking an inch, ever.
They need every inch.
I know. Okay.
Any other conditions, Maureen, you can think of? Everybody's all set? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Good luck.
All right, thank you so much. You guys have a good evening.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next at bat is two Lawrence Street.
All right, this is application zero five seven of the year twenty twenty-five. William J. McDonough and Laura McSweeney have applied to the Falmouth zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section two forty, ten point two A of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to construct a second half-story addition to the existing single-family, non-conforming, single-family dwelling located at two Lawrence Street in Mare Vista, which is in East Falmouth, Massachusetts. The zoning district is RC. They're in the Little Pond Coastal Pond overlay district. They're within a couple of flood zones. They're within AE twelve and the VE fifteen district. There are no previous zoning board of appeals decisions of, on file. The lot is five thousand one hundred nineteen square feet in a zoning district which currently requires forty thousand square feet. The frontage is eighty feet in a zoning district which currently requires one hundred square feet. Lawrence Street is a private right-of-way at this location. The existing structure, it's a single-family dwelling, has a footprint of thirteen hundred, one thousand three hundred fourteen square feet. It's three bedrooms. The proposal is to have the same footprint, one thousand three hundred fourteen square feet, but it will be four bedrooms because of the addition of the half-story on the second floor. The lot coverage by structure is currently twenty-five point seven percent. It will remain the same, because the footprint of the building is remaining the same. The limit is twenty, so there's a non-conformity there. The average lot coverage by structure in the neighborhood is twenty point one, excuse me, twenty point nine-one percent, according to the worksheet submitted with this application. Lot coverage by structure, parking and paving, existing, thirty-nine point seven percent will, will remain at thirty, excuse me, thirty-nine point seven percent, will remain at thirty-nine point seven percent. The limit under the zoning bylaw is forty, so they're okay there. The setbacks are ten feet to the east, to the west. That's the street. It's eight point six feet. No, excuse me. To the west, it's eight point six. To the north, it's seven. And to the south, which is the street, it's eight point, eighteen point eight. That's the non-conformity. There'll be no change. It'll remain the same. The height of the existing building, according to the plans, is sixteen feet. It will be increased to twenty-two feet, three inches. The limit is thirty-five feet, according to the zoning bylaw. We have some referrals from town departments.
Nothing but.
Engineering has advised us to condition stormwater runoff to remain on the property. Board of Health has advised us the property served by the Falmouth Sewer. The Conservation Commission has advised us that they are holding a hearing on September seventeenth, which was last night, and Mr. Clower will probably tell us what happened. The water department requires an upgrade to one HP E. Building department, no comment. Planning board, no comment. No letters in opposition, no letters of support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duffy. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here in town, and I am before you representing my clients, Laura McSweeney and Bill McDonough, the owners of two Lawrence Street. They're here with us this evening. And I'm also joined by Greg Sarunian of ResCom Architecture. So, the applicants are seeking permission to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling on this property. Two Lawrence is located just about the central portion of the Mare Vista Peninsula. It is a dense residential neighborhood, a lot that is about five thousand one hundred and nineteen square feet. As Mr. Duffy noted, it is in the residential C zoning district. The dwelling itself is within an AE twelve flood zone. There is a small portion of the lot that's within a velocity zone, but it does not touch any of the structure, therefore the AE twelve is what controls. Presently, there's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a footprint of one thousand three hundred and fourteen square feet. As it exists, there are a few non-conformities. The front yard setback is eighteen point eight feet, where twenty-five is required. Side yard setback to the west is eight point six feet, where ten is required. And the lot coverage by structure is twenty-five point seven percent, where twenty percent is allowed by right, and up to twenty-five by special permit. The existing ridge height here is sixteen feet. So, the applicants have owned this property for the last twelve years, but they're now looking to make this their full-time residence, and as such, are proposing some changes to make it, you know, more useful, habitable, and, and fitting of their needs. So, what they're seeking to do is the addition of a half-story on a second floor, which will be entirely within the existing footprint. This allows reallocation of space within the structure itself. There's no proposed changes to the footprint. The proposal does not affect the existing non-conforming setbacks, nor the lot coverage percentages. The bedroom count will increase from three to four, but that is allowed by right, as this was within the Little Pond Sewer District. And the proposed ridge height is twenty-two feet, three inches, which is well below the thirty-five feet that's allowed. Due to the existing non-conformities, this requires a special permit from this board pursuant to two forty, ten point two A. Under that provision, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided the board finds that they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. You're asked to consider the standards of two forty, twelve point one E, and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional non-conformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new non-conformity created. There's no effect on the views and vistas from the public ways, and it is consistent with the neighborhood, as I'll elaborate shortly. Though we are not applying for a special permit under two forty, eleven point three A four, that would allow for lot coverage by structure above twenty percent, we're not applying for a special permit under that, because we're going to remain over the twenty-five percent that would be allowed, so it's going to remain non-conforming. I do want to review the requirements of that provision to show why this does conform with the neighborhood. So, under that provision, you'd be asked to look at the size and height of the structure relative to the structures in the neighborhood, the impact on views and vistas, and, and in this case, there are no views and impacts to views and vistas from the public way, because Lawrence Street, as is noted, is a private way in the area. Relative to the size and fit within the neighborhood, we submitted a lot comparison worksheet looking at twenty-six properties, nearby properties within a three-hundred-foot radius. As proposed, this is within seven square feet of the average footprint, and it is about a hundred and fifty square feet larger than the average gross floor area. It's certainly within the character of the neighborhood for gross floor area and square footage. As this board has discussed and noted in a number of cases, Mare Vista is a rapidly changing area, but this is not a radical change from what currently exists. This project, as proposed, represents an improvement for the owners, adds useful, habitable space, and is by no means substantially more detrimental than what exists. There's no new dimensional non-conformity. There's no change to the existing non-conformity. As it stands, I believe this meets all the requirements of two forty, ten point two A and two forty, twelve point one E. For those reasons, I would ask the board grant the special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
You want to let Tony stop, Mark?
Why not?
Break it up?
But I don't want to. I think it, it is well suited to the area, because you told us it is on the sewer line. I just couldn't find the sewer line marked on the plan, but this particular plan is just filled with a lot of good things. But I believe it's on the sewer line. I just think it's well suited to the area and should work well.
Great. I should note very quickly, we did have conservation last night. The, it's been continued, because we're just looking at the placement of some of the mitigation plantings. So, any decision from this board, should you choose to grant one, would just be subject to the decision of conservation, as it would be in any other circumstance.
Kevin, it says that little slab patio thing in the front's going away, right?
Yes.
And we're just keeping the one set of stairs?
Yes.
And they're going to be granite?
Whatever they are is going to be remaining. Greg, any other, yeah, no, no change to those stairs.
Okay. So, those stairs are staying, because they both just say stone on them, and then they don't look the same at all, so. I think that's all I have. Frank?
I think my questions have been answered already. Thank you.
I'm fine also, Attorney Clower. I guess from my own education, where the property line on the west to the reventment, who owns that land?
So, that was actually part of the discussion at conservation last night. There's a Massachusetts general law, and the exact number of it is escaping me, but it's referred to generally as the derelict fee statute. And what that holds is, when property abuts a private way, and there's no specific reservation of the fee ownership of the way and the deeds, the abutter is presumed to own at least to the center line of that way. So, in this case, the applicants own at least to the center line. Now, the original subdivision plan for this area showed no parcel on the other side, so they would actually be presumed to own the entirety of the way, subject to the rights of others that might have rights to pass over it. But the fee ownership would be in, in the applicants.
Good move. That's nice. Okay, thank you.
Were you talking, though, about the yard?
Yeah.
Not the street?
Yeah, well, I still understand, this, this, CONCOM has still got the, all these there, but it's a nice benefit, I guess.
Yeah, it's a nice, nice place to sit out and make up the sunset.
Yeah. Well, that, I, I only had two. First off, it's, 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 by no means are you going overboard here. It's nice, it's tasteful, it's, it's not excessive. And then that was my other comment. I mean, we see numerous properties that benefit from the road layout, but never liked the pond layout, so to speak. Good for you. And then the third thing, I have a friend who looks exactly like you. As a matter of fact, I thought you were him at first.
Eyesight's going.
Yeah, I was at the eye doctor today. He told me I'd be fine.
A dashing, a dashing handsome man, is what I think you meant to say.
Obviously, you have the same problem I have, blind in one eye, can't see out of the other.
Contacts are lifesavers.
Tony? I have just one more question. And on the plan, when it's notated land under the ocean, in this particular case, what does that, or any particular case, what does that mean?
Yeah, what does that mean?
Uh, can you just point me to where?
Under the words Little Pond.
Little Pond, where?
Land under the.
So, there is, there are some parcels that were on the side of Little Bay Street, but have since succumbed to erosion.
Ah, succumb.
And so, when, it's, it's secretion, as opposed to accretion, so they've lost the land over there. That was never part of the original subdivision, but there were.
Was a paper road there, wasn't it?
There was a paper road, but the paper road was the extent of the subdivision plan. But there was, there was a little, there was a little parcel that kind of came down, like this way, and it's no longer there.
Thank you.
Good question.
Some states have, like, subaqueous rights, they refer to it as. Massachusetts doesn't. Massachusetts ownership ends at the.
It's a shame we should have subaqueous rights.
It's a fun word to say, if nothing else.
We actually do have subaqueous rights, going back to sixteen fifty, when they created that.
The colonial ordinances of.
Colonial ordinances of.
He was there.
Fowling and.
Were those difficult to write, Tony?
I, I took some time, but I got it done.
As before, crayons.
Any other questions up here?
No.
Guys all set? Anybody from the public want to comment? You want a new house, huh? It looks great, I feel. Mark?
Make a motion to close, Madam Chair.
We have a motion to close in a second. You're all set? Attorney Clower? You're all set?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Let's close first.
Okay.
All those in favor of closing? Aye. And none, none opposed? Yeah.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
We have a motion at second.
Okay.
Mike's getting a workout.
We have an application before us under section two forty, ten point two A of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to add second half-story to the existing single-family dwelling. Project is in an RC zoning district, and it's in the Little Pond Coastal Pond overlay district. There are two applicable flood zones, AE twelve and VE fifteen. No previous decisions of the Board of Appeals on record. The lot is five thousand one hundred nineteen square feet, and the zoning district currently requiring forty thousand square feet, so it is currently non-conforming. The street frontage is eighty feet, and the zoning district currently requiring a hundred, so it is non-conforming. Uh, Lawrence Street is a private, uh, right-of-way at this location. The existing structure is thirteen hundred fourteen square feet, um, and it's a three-bedroom. The proposed structure remains at thirteen hundred fourteen square feet. It'll be four bedrooms. The lot coverage by structure is twenty-five point seven percent. It will remain the same. The limit is twenty percent, so this is nonconforming as it exists. The average, uh, lot coverage by structure in the neighborhood, according to the worksheet submitted with this application, is twenty point nine one percent. Lot coverage by structure parking and paving, uh, is thirty-nine point seven percent. Uh, it will remain at thirty-nine point seven percent. The limit is forty under the zoning bylaw, so it squeaks in under the forty percent limit of the zoning bylaw. The, um, there are several nonconformities noted with respect to setbacks. The west setback is eight point six feet. The south setback, which is the street, is eighteen point eight, eight feet. There'll be no change. They will all remain the same, but there will be no new nonconformities. The existing structure is sixteen feet in height. The proposed structure will be twenty-two feet, three inches.
Is that a Free Jack shirt?
Um, we had, uh, we have one letter in support of this, I think. Yeah, yeah, one letter in support, uh, in the file. Um, under section two forty, ten point two A, um, we make the finding that the proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, uh, structure. There'll be no new nonconformities. There's no impairment of existing views and vistas, and the proposed structure reasonably conforms to the average dimensions and lot coverage in the neighborhood, which is two, twenty point nine, uh, percent. This one will be twenty-five point seven percent. The conditions for a special permit generally are found in section two forty, twelve point one E of the Falmouth zoning bylaw. We make the finding that the property is adequate for the proposed use. It is suitable for the proposed use. There's no evidence of negative impact to traffic flow and safety. There's no evidence of a neighbor, of negative impact on neighborhood visual, visual character of views and vistas. Sewage is handled by the Falmouth Town Sewer. There's adequate utilities, and there's no evidence of negative impact on the proposed, excuse me, on the supply of affordable housing.
Find you up tonight, Frank. All right, conditions. Um, per plans, all boards, including Concom. Um, all departments, any referrals? Uh, you probably will have to do police for this one.
Um.
You don't think so?
Dead end street.
Yeah, that's true.
And until the mitigation plantings go in, there's pretty ample space in the front of that lot.
I forgot it was dead end, that's true. Uh, construction hours, seven to seven Monday through Friday, eight to four on sad days. No construction on Sundays or town holidays. Um, construction vehicles must be located within the lot. Dark sky compliant lighting. Nothing else on, no further structures?
And since it says it's well below the thirty-five feet at twenty-two feet, three inches, we don't need an asbilled?
No, I don't think we need one, yeah. Any other conditions, Maureen? Can you think of any? I think we're in good shape. All those in favor?
Aye.
Enjoy.
Guys, you got through four approvals in one hour and ten minutes?
Yeah.
That is, uh.
Lucky lately.
They were all wonderful projects tonight.
That is pretty, that is pretty speedy.
Yeah.
You're a lucky guy, Mark.
All right, let's, you.
It's even worse.
Was he, was he in the public view?
All right.
Um, are we doing minutes?
Yes.
Do you want all of those, or do you want to piecemeal them, or what do you want to do?
So, we are doing them all.
We are?
If you, yes. If you want to vote them separately, it's fine. Um, one comment for the board members regarding August fourteenth. Uh, we did re, uh, receive some comments about the draft minutes. Uh, there was a party that was less than enthusiastic about the minutes. Um, I explained to the party that the minutes do meet the state requirement for minutes. Um, and I gave them the section, the requirements that are listed. Ashley does a fabulous job, as you all know. And goes above and beyond the requirements, the minimum requirements. You have virtually, virtually a transcript, not a transcript. The party had a preference to have a transcript. I explained to them, we don't do that. Uh, town council concurred with my assertion, so I, I'm just raising this to you so that I'm completing the circle and informing you that there was a party that was unhappy.
Well, the party should, um, go read some other minutes, and then they'll find out what gold Ashley's minutes are.
From other towns.
Yeah, other towns, other, I've never read minutes better than Ashley's.
No, no.
Um, I haven't been able to find a mistake. I've almost given up.
We never make errors.
No. Is it all right with, is everyone comfortable with the fourteenth or ex, can I lump them together?
You can.
I read them all and I had no comment.
Yeah. So, we'll make a motion for July thirty-first, twenty-five, August fourteenth, twenty-five, August twenty-one, twenty-five, and August twenty-eight, twenty-five. That's a motion. I'll need a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Everybody's all set with them?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Good job. On board discussion?
Uh, so, next for the board, I did just want to bring up, um, the Benjamin Nye staking. Um, clearly, the parcel is of sufficient, substantial size, and the fact that it's largely wooded at the perimeters makes it very difficult to stake and probably not likely that most board members going to wander to those perimeter areas, so wanted to, uh, sort of have a conversation with you. I figured probably scheduling a group site walk made sense so that the board could go out there with.
Tick spray.
To represent, yes.
I was just thinking, we're all going to have to wear good clothes.
You know, so that you can get, you know, a feel for where they want to put things. But that being said, I did want to check with the board about.
Can we walk the site prior to the hearing, or do we have to wait until it opens?
Well.
As a group, I'll try it as a group.
Prior would be more.
Yes.
Referible to me. I'd like, I'd like to know what's going on.
Yeah. Oh, we do, yes. Where's our drone?
That's amazing.
Yeah, where's our drone?
Ashley, can you fly that drone?
Actually, the building department is the proud parent of a drone. That being said, they are, and presumptively.
Where do they get ninety-nine, ninety-five?
Uh, you know, roof exams after roofing or something. I'm not sure exactly what their rollout is, but I know that they've all practiced driving the drone and.
Gary has his pilot's license, so I think he can do okay.
That's right. He can probably fly and fly the drone at the same time.
It's kind of an interesting situation where these rules are not within the public view, and they're videoing, videoing that without the homeowner's permission, or do they have to get the homeowner's permission to do that? I, I'm just bringing it up.
I don't know the rules on drone stuff.
Some towns do have rules, I know, but I don't know.
I'm just curious.
We don't have any.
The drone just has to put on one of those tags like we have.
So, the staking, I thought, I was okay with the staking if they did road layout. That's what I, that was my answer.
How many acres is the thing?
What I asked for.
Eight total?
Yeah, seven or eight.
Project zone?
What I asked for was just that over on the Cameron Road side, that someone put some orange markers at eye level, just with that buffer zone into the backyards and the buffers, just to see that, because Cameron Road is the one that's going to be most directly affected, in my opinion.
Affected by, yeah.
Affected by it. I'm not sure that you heard back, that would be something they're willing to do or capable of.
Yeah, so, so I guess there's a couple of issues there. Um, you know, when you're asking for a stake at eye level.
I don't want a stake. I want a flag on a tree. You know, the orange, the orange marker.
Yeah, so, there's an outer perimeter, and then they have a no disturb zone. And then they're clearing after that. So, do you want the marker at the clearing or at the actual lot line? Because there's, they're not going to be the same, right? Because where you're leaving a certain amount of the property from the perimeter, natural, if the marker goes at that line, someone may have the assumption that they're going to clear to that marker, right? Which is not what's intended.
Obviously, I don't have, and I've not thoroughly read the hearing docs. All I cared about is estimating the distance between the back of the lot on that Cameron Road side and the buffer zone to approximately where those houses are. I was just looking for that. When I go out there, I mean, for me, this is a pretty easy site to look at because you have a lot of reference points with the buildings.
Yeah, because you can walk there.
Well, yes. I may, I may. That's all I was looking for. If the rest of the board doesn't want that, that, I'm not going to push that.
I guess the other thing I would point out to the board is that the setback from the lot line is ten feet. Under forty B, you don't have to comply even with the minimum setback requirements. You can set it wherever you want. But I think Habitat, in making a best effort to be a good neighbor, left a buffer area, and then they're stepping in the house further from there. So, it will be effectively nowhere near the ten feet allowed from a lot line.
Well, we're going to go look at this first, so if, and we have any questions, we'll be, we can, if it only makes sense to, we can follow up or whatever, yeah. I think.
Is road layout comfortable for everybody? Is that, yeah?
Yeah.
So, we'll last one for road layout, and then if there's something more particular,
because it's not really not going to be one.
When you ask for road layout, are you talking with center line or edge to edge? Center line. It should be center line.
I'm guessing.
Well, I just want to get, I mean, if that's what they want, center line.
Let's go center line.
Let's go center line.
Okay.
And it will be twenty feet either side.
No, it's just, we just want to see approximately where it is.
Forty B, so it won't be because it's a forty B. I think it's only twenty-two wide. Isn't it only twenty-two wide, the road?
I don't exactly recall.
Yeah.
I haven't looked at the Falmouth town.
We're in St. Barbara.
I know.
Yeah. I'm sure it's in here somewhere.
We have a fall meeting coming up?
Yeah, we're supposed to have a Saturday.
So, uh, we have a board member who is, by and large, going to be out during October, so I don't know if you want to wait and look at November for that.
And we have stopped on, too. We should. It'll be the first week in November.
It'd be nice to have the whole board.
It would be nice to specifically schedule so that everybody can make it.